Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for candidates for Everett City Council Districts 3, 4, and 5. I am your moderator, Jody Troutwine. I'm the outgoing Voter Services Chair of the Snohomish League. All candidates for Everett City Council were invited to attend a forum. Candidates participating in this forum are Don Schwab for District 3, Liz Vogli for District 4, and Ben Zarlingo and Demi Chatters for District 5. Candidates for the other districts, 1 and 2, are participating in a different candidate forum. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues which we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. The ground rules for this forum were set ahead of time to all of the candidates. Also, opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared. However, we've made each candidate aware of the issue areas that this forum is likely to cover. And we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond, and then 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final question. And I will state that clearly when we get to the last question. We are using a countdown timer visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts candidates when there are 15 seconds left and when time is up. Time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you are done. I'll change the order, starting order, for each question, rotating through all the candidates to ensure a random and fair sequence. The order for the first question will be Mr. Schwab, then Ms. Vogli, then Mr. Varlingo, and then Ms. Chatters. Okay, so let's begin. The first question starts with Mr. Schwab, and that is, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position? Mr. Schwab.
For the last 30 years, I have served the citizens as an Everett firefighter. I have served as an EMT, a rescue specialist, and emergency manager. This experience has uniquely prepared me to lead Everett through these difficult times. I have municipal budget experience and financial management skills. Currently, I'm employed at the Snohomish County Treasurer's Office. This experience will assist in navigating through financial challenges that the city is having and prioritizing essential services. I have some unique experiences serving the homeless. I was one of those emergency service providers that showed up in the middle of the night to a homeless person on the sidewalk with no place to go and no support available. I've experienced connecting to our city in many ways. I've been active in the community by participating in over 13 different nonprofit organizations, from the Snohomish County American Red Cross to the Boys and Girls Club. I'm optimistic about Everett's future, serving the public for all these years, and I've experienced the passion, resiliency, and strength of our community, and I share these values.
Thank you. And now we move to Ms. Vogli, same question. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
I am Liz Vogli, and I'm a fighter for the people. I'm running for reelection to Everett City Council District 4, being a renter, homeowner, landlord, homeless, familial mental health issues, felony convictions in the family, cancer, taking the life of a loved one. All our stories shared by a lot of us in this city. I take these and other personal stories, and I fuse them with my ability to dig deep into a subject, do the work, and strive for liberty and justice for all. I will continue this work. Our city is in crisis, along with the rest of the country. Fiscal responsibility, housing for all, and public safety are key elements in a just society. Thank you.
Thank you. And so then we move this question to Mr. Varlingo. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Well, I've had deep involvement in neighborhood and other parts of the city since 1991, including schools, multiple volunteer organizations, and a lot of time in front of the city council, planning commission, hearing examiners, and the Parks Board. With others in my neighborhood, I've met with local businesses and spent time advising and negotiating with builders and developers, even opposing some projects when we couldn't make them right for the neighborhood. I try my best to listen, negotiating good faith, to be creative and to find wins with appropriate compromises. My business experience as a project manager and forecaster helps me make sense of the kinds of predictions and choices that those who manage a city have got to make. I also respect the limits of my own knowledge, and I expect to build on that with the perspective of other council members and the information and support from city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Ms. Chatters. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Thank you. Well, I am a mom of four. I'm a former small business owner, and I've worked in real estate and public service agencies in both King and Snohomish County. My volunteer experience includes working with organizations that serve children and marginalized communities, as well as community advocacy work around issues in public education. My educational background is in business, marketing, and leadership. I'm currently a Director of Operations at a local law firm, as well as a Snohomish County Human Rights Commissioner. I have direct experience with community advocacy work and direct experience identifying and balancing the needs of stakeholders and the constraints of project goals and budgets. And I have specific experience working within the framework of public agencies and publicly funded capital projects. My background provides me with the tools and depth of knowledge, as well as the perspective to effectively serve the community on our next council. And I will do this while specifically centering the needs of our working families at the decision-making table.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Vogli, then Mr. Varlingo, then Ms. Chatters, and Mr. Schwab. And it is, what are the biggest challenges facing Everett and what are its greatest strengths? Man, Ms. Vogli first.
Oh, the greatest challenges facing our city of Everett. Housing, 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 and budget, budget, budget. And of course, the public safety. It really, so those are the three biggest, I believe. And what are our strengths? Well, we are surrounded, not entirely because we're not an island, but surrounded by water. We have the port, we have beautiful parks, we have a welcoming neighborhoods. And really, I think, quite strong leadership and the possibility of even stronger leadership with our new districts. So I am very excited to really get working with some more new faces as I continue on the council and see the timer going down, oh my goodness. Four, three, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. What are the, this to Mr. Zarlingo, sorry. What are the biggest challenges facing Everett and what are its greatest strengths?
Well, I think I can say that Liz had a good summary to begin that. The housing, the housing costs in particular and associated homelessness, that's only one of the factors, but it's a big one. The budget, of course. And I think there's a lot we can do to increase this housing supply. I've been talking some to builders and developers about some of the issues with them. And if we get time later on, I'll talk more about that. But I do want to say there are a number of things that I really like about Everett. I think it's tremendous strengths. Certainly, the port, the airport, right next to us here. The workers here, it's a worker city. It's a can-do kind of place. But it's also got glorious places, the parks, the waterfront, places like Jetty Island, Silver Lake here near where I am. I think it's a wonderful place to be. I think we have a lot of attractive, a lot of attractive features and proximity to I-5 and places like Sea-Tac, so you can have jobs in other parts of the country as well. So I think great strengths, but we've got some real challenges ahead of us.
Thank you. All right, and Ms. Chatters, the same question. What is the, what are the biggest challenges facing Everett and what are its greatest strengths?
Well, the biggest challenges that we're facing, both Liz and Ben did a really good job of giving an overview. Housing affordability is right there at the top. We have a crisis with regard to that that is leading to an explosion in our homeless population. We have a lot of unhoused folks that are struggling on our streets. At the same time, we also have a budget crisis, a structural budget crisis that has existed for quite some time that still has not yet been resolved that our next council will need to tackle. We have transportation and infrastructure needs that need to be funded because we are a very fast-growing city. Our population continues to increase. Our greatest strength in confronting these issues is our people. We have some amazing people here in Everett with some amazing skill sets and some amazing ideas. So we need to support our businesses, support our entrepreneurs, so we can get back to a thriving economy and leave no one behind as we recover from this COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. And now we move that question to Mr. Schwab. What are the biggest challenges affecting Everett and what are its greatest strengths?
Yes, hello. Currently, our biggest challenges are the housing crisis, and that really comes in multiple dimensions, including the homeless. Economic development and the impact of COVID-19. Of course, then there's the budget deficit and the long-term structural deficit. I see as some of the strengths, as I think it was brought up earlier by Ben, I think the people and the history of Everett, it's a strong working-class town. People are passionate, the business community is passionate, passionate. There's a lot of, a lot of our neighbors all want the city to be great. We have great parks, we have an airport, a waterfront. We have great mountains and a great bay. So there's a lot of natural resources here for us to harness and make attraction for businesses and people to move into our community.
Thank you. Okay, our next question will be Mr. Varlingo, then Ms. Chatters, then Mr. Schwab, then Ms. Vogli. And it is, what are the issues of any in Everett addressing, excuse me, arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist? So yes, Mr. Zarlingo.
Well, certainly there are great issues from the pandemic. It has worsened a lot of the things that were already a challenge, in particular, the budget deficit. I think people fundamentally want things to return to normal in the city function, businesses, churches, civic organizations. We're not there yet, so we have to continue to adapt and to build back up to the best extent possible, especially to keep people connected and keep businesses going. Now, the city can lead and coordinate in these areas and can target and has targeted funding to initiatives that will enhance continuity. I think it's really important that we avoid any business losses that we can because it's hard to build them back up, and there's such a human cost along the way. We also can pay special attention and are, I've been working with the Parks Department for the Trail Around Silver Lake and the project manager there, paying special attention to parks and outdoor spaces where risks are lower. And finally, communication is really key. We already have channels from Mayor and the County Executive about the state of things and how important it is that we do what we can as individuals to avoid hospital and ICU overload.
Thank you. Okay, moving that question next to Ms. Chatters. What are the issues of any in Everett arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
Well, the pandemic really served to highlight a lot of deficiencies that we have in our system in terms of meeting the needs of our working families. It has really exposed the fact that we have a mental health crisis in this country as well. I read a statistic that said 30% of folks in the United States are showing clinical levels of mental health symptoms as a result of what we have gone through collectively during the pandemic. We've also seen, despite the eviction moratorium, a lot of folks losing housing, unable to maintain that, and more folks tipping over the edge into homelessness. In addition to that, we've seen women leaving the workforce in large numbers because they have not been able to maintain childcare, and they have not yet been able to return to the workforce because that childcare infrastructure is not in place. So as far as the things that we need to do, we need to start by listening to the community to find out where these gaps in needs are, where these gaps in services are, so we can meet those needs and make sure that we are making this.
Thank you so much. And this goes to Mr. Schwab now. What are the issues of any in Everett arising from the pandemic? Mr. Schwab?
Yes, thank you. I would say, I mean, a lot's been covered. I think one of the key issues is to make sure that those that want to receive the vaccination or receive proper healthcare have the resources and the connections to those resources. I'm glad it was brought up about the eviction moratorium. I think that's going to be a big challenge for our community. I know that there's potentially a lot of grant money that's going to be coming from the federal government, both in the ARP and in other institutional support infrastructure. So I think that the city of Everett can be a good conduit to our community to distribute these resources that we'll be getting from the federal government, both with businesses and those in need and other communities that don't necessarily have the culture or the language that can connect.
Thank you. And moving that question to Mr. Zarlingo. What are the issues, if any, in Everett arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
Actually, I think I answered that one.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yes, before Ms. Chatters.
All right, thank you. Okay, then it's you. Oh, excuse me. All right, thank you. Yes, I see that. Sorry, thank you. Yes, Ms. Vogli.
Issues with the pandemic, yes, we certainly have had many, and it's almost two years in. You know, our economy has tanked. It was already not fantastic. There's been a serious division of people with their own ideologies, ideas, and that's a really big one. That's like super huge. And I am not entirely certain how to go about fixing that. I don't know that it can be fixed, but I do know that I am fantastic at listening to folks out there that have something to say, right? And utilizing all of that information and really trying to bring us together. You hear it in many of the speeches and just talks that I give. So let's get together.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving on, now, there's been some reference to some parts of this question, but it's a big one. So I think probably everyone still has something to contribute. The question is, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues? And then we would start with Ms. Chatters on that. Then we'd go to Mr. Schwab, to Ms. Vogli, then to Mr. Varlingo. So Ms. Chatters.
Thank you. If you have ever had a family member who has been in the midst of a mental health crisis, then you understand how critical it is that we support our public safety workers in the work that they do when they intervene in those situations. Like, for example, the co-ed team that our Everett Police Department runs, where they have social workers going out with police officers. We need to expand that, so they're not just addressing those issues as they arise with folks who are dealing with being unhoused, but when folks, everyday folks, have mental health crises in their families and in their homes, so we can have social workers out there meeting the needs of the community. We also have a problem with capacity for mental health treatment. We need more beds. I would love to support programs like the new 24-bed mental health treatment unit that they just opened at the Colby Campus for Providence. That is a critical service for our community. Compass Health also has a permanent supportive housing units that just opened recently that provide another critical resource.
Thank you so much. Okay, and now to Mr. Schwab. What initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues? Mr. Schwab?
Yeah, thank you, all in 60 seconds. I think the key for the city of Everett is partnership with nonprofit organizations, state, county, and federal governments to find the resources and coordinate where they're needed the most. Another initiative that specifically to the homelessness is I've been a big supporter of, and that is the Law Enforcement Embedded Social Worker Program. Everett got a grant, it's called the LEAD Program. I am a supporter of keeping social workers and law enforcement on the streets that demonstrate compassion and connection to services. There is definitely a balance there. I think it's really important that those on the streets get ample opportunity to get the resources, get the rehabilitation programs, and make that connection.
Thank you. Okay, moving that question to Ms. Vogli. What initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
Yes, those are large, deep, humongous holes that we have. So land use and zoning is a big thing that the city council gets to work with. And that has, I think that's going to have a lot to do with housing, housing affordability, how we can get more affordable housing and people into that housing, right? So there's always going to be a few people on the streets that don't have housing for whatever reason. Mental health, drug, diversion and treatment, housing first, outreach and enforcement, you know, all, like Schwab said, the LEAD Program, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. We have a lot of work to do, and I hate seeing that timer. And I've worked on it, and I'm going to continue to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now to you, Mr. Zarlingo. What initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
I've been talking to a lot of the residents about the issues as they see them, and I found that they're generous and concerned, and there's a real desire to help through the city and other organizations. A couple of key things that offer the possibility of some large-scale progress. One element is partnering and coordinating with other entities, such as the county and other cities. Homelessness is growing much faster in Everett than the rest of the county, and some of our residents are asking if we're shouldering an unfair portion of the load. I don't know about that for sure yet, but the generosity and support of our citizens depends on their confidence in the fairness and the equity and the effectiveness of the measures we're taking. Another thing is the increasing, is increasing the general housing supply, which will moderate prices and rents. And I've been talking to builders and developers about their day-to-day activity and the project trajectories and how we can work with them to get more done, more efficiently, while still protecting the neighborhoods and their character. As a matter of fact, I just submitted some analysis and public comment to the council two days ago on accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached. So I think we can make real progress.
Thank you so much. Okay, now moving to another question. And our order will be Mr. Schwab, Ms. Vogli, Mr. Zarlingo, and Ms. Chatters. And the question is, what is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose idea or life experiences are different from yours? And Mr. Schwab?
Yes, thank you for the question. The key really is, it's about listening and connecting. I do appreciate the diversity of our city. I mean, there's over 90 languages spoken. There's a lot of listening, and I think one of the keys for connecting is don't depend on just a few people and a few phone calls. My strategy would be go out and meet and greet people, go to where they're at, go to where they're working, go to where they're meeting, go to the neighborhood groups, spend time with them where they're at, and get to know them and, you know, searching out opinions. I think as far as the council, once again, a good listener. I do think that the districting will work. We all have common problems throughout the city and some specific needs to the districts. But I think working together, and once again, listening and respecting other people's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving this question to Ms. Vogli. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
While we have a whole lot of the same experiences, essentially, we also have many, many different experiences and all need to be heard and listened to and thoughtfully and compassionately worked with. Now, Schwab, you did a nice job. Actually, everybody's doing a great job with their answers. I absolutely love being able to have housing forums, that was pre-pandemic, having Zoom meetings with various folks on different ideas having to do with policy. I write a newsletter so that I can help generate input, going to community groups, you know, like Casa Latina, Casa Madres de Casino Road or other, you know, other such community voices because we need to hear them, and we will.
Thank you very much. And moving to Mr. Zarlingo for this question. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
You know, actually, I found that different ideas and life experiences is core to working productively and effectively. I think I see several key elements. First, of course, we talked about listening carefully, not just waiting for a chance to state your own point of view, but also understanding that others can have different and valid points of view with different experiences in their background. Sometimes, different opinions or approaches to a problem are due to a different weight that they give to factors, not necessarily a fundamentalist agreement, and you can find real agreement in those cases. Also, respecting other ways of thinking and other ways of getting things done, the key factor that that diversity adds. If everyone's thinking the same thing, there's probably not enough thinking going on. Also, finally, to accept the outcome of an honest process and to work to achieve the goals for the best outcome for Everett and its citizens. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, now this question to Ms. Chatters. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
Thank you. Well, we definitely need to focus on being active listeners as well as building cultural competency so we can understand some of the experiences that inform the perspectives of the people that we are trying to work with, trying to hear from. We need to listen for the purpose of understanding what our shared and common goals are. We need to research and gather information, talk to multiple people, multiple sources, get varied perspectives from people with different walks of life so we can really have a balanced understanding of where the needs might be. And one of my favorite questions is to ask folks, well, why? Why do you believe that, or why is that your goal? And hear the stories behind that. Because often, when we hear the stories of why folks are trying to achieve what they say their goal is, it helps lead to a solution because we can land on shared values and find a pathway forward that leads to a solution.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we are now moving to the next question, which is, what are the most pressing environmental issues Everett faces? And what would you propose to address them? And we'll start with Ms. Vogli, then Mr. Varlingo, then Zarlingo, excuse me, Ms. Chatters, and Mr. Schwab. Now, okay, Ms. Vogli.
The environment is one of those crises that we are all experiencing, greenhouse gas emissions. And I do not think that electric vehicles are the answer. I think they're part of the answer, but really getting our city to be able to have safe, walkable streets, neighborhoods, sidewalks, getting folks out of their cars and into transit which is reliable and on time. There's better words for that. And, you know, it's all about being able to breathe. You know, with the pandemic, if you get COVID, you can't breathe very well. And with all of the greenhouse gases and the climate change, we're also not being able to breathe. So gearing our city so that people want to come here to breathe.
All right, moving that question to Mr. Zarlingo. What are the most pressing environmental issues Everett faces? And what would you propose to address them?
That's one of the biggest of big questions. So with the large-scale problems, I'm going to try to set those aside some and focus on the things where I want the city to tackle problems where the city can make a difference. For the public environment, particularly parks, I want to preserve their quality and public access and work with partners to improve them. Things like what Forterra's been doing, the Partnership Green Everett. My daughter and I have taken the basic training and volunteered for years in our neighborhood, and two or three others. I think that kind of green canopy is something that Everett has every reason to be proud of. It also helps clean the air, and that's something we can continue with. Also, things like the rain gardens to reduce unnecessary lawns, chemicals, and excess runoff. And then I think from talking to builders, there are things we can do in trees and development to make sure that we're offering flexibility. to make sure that we're offering flexibility to maximize the good tree cover and not just counting stems. Talk to some builders who think they can do more and better with some flexibility in how trees are being handled before, during, and especially after construction to make sure they stay healthy.
Thank you so much. And now moving to Ms. Chatters. What are the most pressing environmental issues Everett faces and what would you propose to address them?
Thank you. Well, Liz alluded to transportation as an issue and it absolutely is. We need to get folks out of their cars, give them options to get out of their cars through public transportation systems, walkability, bike ability. But that has to do with housing and housing is an environmental issue, not just because we need to be building with environmental concerns in mind, but because when we don't have adequate housing stock, that pushes folks further and further away from the job center, which means they are more car dependent and they have to, you know, burn those engines in order to get to where they're going to work. So increasing housing stock here in Everett where more folks have access to job centers is critical. The other issue is we have a place called Wood Creek here in the south central Everett area. That is a very large forest area that they're considering development on. And that would be a really big negative impact to the environment. So we need to start asking questions around it, around that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And now this question to Mr. Schwab. What are the most pressing environmental issues Everett faces and what would you propose to address them?
Yes, thank you for the question. I would say the most pressing issues are the are waterway protection. And I think with the pressure of growth, our stormwater and sewer retention and processing is really important to keeping our creeks and our beautiful bay and our rivers clean. I think a lot of good things were mentioned, but noise and air quality. And I'd be promoting green spaces. I know there's a lot of pressure to put new developments in. There can be some good planning programs that include trees and replanting. I know they have a big project on the old Kmart there and Evergreen Way. I know they took out fifty trees. I'm hoping that they'll put at least that many back plus a good plan for green spaces. And that's it. Thank you for now.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to the next question and then we'll start with Mr. Zarlingo, then Ms. Chatters, then Mr. Schwab, then Ms. Vogli. And what should be Everett's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities? And Mr. Zarlingo.
Sure. Well, first of all, the city's got to lead by example in hiring, promotions, assignments, by the way it treats citizens and employees. It's got to be fair and it's got to be seen to be fair. We need to reach out to offer opportunities equally, to cast a wide net, to make sure that opportunities are made available, not only to those who are somehow plugged in, those who are marginalized especially. Also, to make sure that those who do business with the city ensure that their potential employees, contractors and associated people offer fair treatment as well. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And we'll move this question to Ms. Chatters. What should be Everett's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Well, there definitely are existing racial inequities. And one of the things that leadership can do is look around at the decision making table and notice who is not there. We do not have a single person of color on our county, on our city council. And in fact, I am the only person of color who is even in the race for a city council position. So we can start by ensuring that there is representation from the BIPOC community at those decision making tables and supporting that representation, actively seeking it and electing folks who are from those communities into those positions. We can also build cultural competency. Again, understanding where different communities are coming from and what experiences they have and bringing those folks into the conversations. So when we talk about who are we consulting, when we talk to the community, we need to be passing the mic to more folks and consulting with people who have different experiences and ensuring that their voices are heard as well.
Thank you. And now we'll move that question to Mr. Schwab. What should Everett's plan to be to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Yes, thank you. Well, it was brought up earlier. It does start with the city's hiring practices. And the city's employees should reflect the diversity of our city. The city of Everett needs to evaluate its policies and procedures. Just a systematic review. I know they've worked on different initiatives. And just to assure that equity across the board is 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 part of their policies. Also, I think there's a connecting piece. As I mentioned earlier, city leaders, we cannot stand by and just wait to get input. We need to go out into the community and look at programs, connect with leaders from different groups, communicate what our intentions are and get and get feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then the last person on this question would be Ms. Vogli. What should be Everett's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Thank you. Great question. Our charter has civil service requirements. I don't have all of the words in front of me. But it makes it very difficult to be able to hire folks that may not have English as a first language. And so that needs to be looked at and I think changed because we need to be able to hire folks that can't answer all of the white people questions, right? And there are white, not only white, but also, you know, well versed in speaking. So that's the first thing. I know that I think it might be state law that it must be used for police and fire, but it's not the law for everybody. Boards and commissions, you know, let's really get people in. And it's going to be hard and we got to do it and I'm here for it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the next question and the order this time will be Ms. Chatters, Mr. Schwab, Ms. Vogli, then Mr. Zarlingo. And this is, what is one aspect of public safety which you think could be improved in Everett to increase effectiveness and equity? And Ms. Chatters.
Thank you. I I think that when it comes to public safety, we absolutely have to broaden the umbrella of what public safety means. A lot of issues that are responded to have to do with issues of of mental health crisis or addiction, issues around those those particular really tough challenges. And, you know, these are families in our communities. These are our neighbors, our our family members who are struggling with these issues. And the responses from our public safety workers, they do the best that they can, but they're often not equipped with the full team that they would need to address these types of issues. We need to expand mental health under the public safety umbrella and ensure that those folks are available to respond to the public when those issues arise and ensure that those mental health workers and our public safety workers, and this goes right back to cultural competency, have the tools and the knowledge to address issues that are occurring out in our neighborhoods and communities effectively.
Thank you so much. And now to Mr. Schwab. What is one aspect of public safety which you think could be improved in Everett to increase effectiveness and equity?
Yes, thank you for that question. The one thing would be the resources available for law enforcement and our firefighter EMTs to rely upon when they come to a situation of homelessness or, as mentioned, early mental illness. That aspect, they are really the gatekeepers of an emergency call or an incident that happens in our city. As Everett Fire Department, we're always lacking on places that we could send or people that we could call for additional help when our services weren't the exact need of that individual. So the one thing is we need to add to the resource to the tool belt for our first responders, the ones that are responding to our citizens or in community neighbors. So they can refer them to the proper resources.
Okay, thank you. Moving that question to Ms. Vogli. What is one aspect of public safety which you think could be improved in Everett to increase effectiveness and equity?
I'm glad this is only one aspect because there are many. So I'm going to go with active transportation and being able to. It's not safe for our kids to learn how to ride bikes on the street. It's not safe to walk to school. And that's not because of all of the needles and and folks that are out there not doing what we think they should, but because people are driving too fast, because our streets are geared towards cars. They're not geared towards people. And some of the laws like jaywalking, I'm not sure who has been arrested for jaywalking recently, but we know that that started out as a racial issue. And so creating structured bike lanes so that cars aren't hitting the bicyclists. You know, that is a huge part of public safety and accessibility.
Thank you very much. And the last person on this question is Ms., excuse me, Mr. Zarlingo. And that is, what is one aspect of public safety which you think could be improved in Everett to increase effectiveness and equity?
I think Ms. Vogli had it right. There are a number of things about this and we can only really talk about a few of them here. Certainly, the core things here are addiction and mental health. And, you know, when I was much younger, we got rid of the institutions that were sometimes just warehouses for people and were terrible places. So it was good to get rid of them, but we didn't really replace them with enough other resources. We also didn't expect the drug problem that's been pushed on us. We do need to expand the resources, not only for first responders, but since these problems often show themselves as homelessness, I think we need to pair up some of the homeless homelessness responses with the strategies that will work to encourage people to take positive steps. It isn't just a matter of housing for these people. That can too easily become warehousing for these people. We need something that encourages them day to day and repeatedly to take every chance to take a positive step to turn their lives around. I also think we need to, we need to provide enough law enforcement, enough law enforcement resources to help the public feel safer so that they don't feel like public safety is compromised in this way.
Thank you so much. All right, we're now at the point in the forum where we're going to allow ninety seconds for an answer for a question. And this is, oh, it will be Mr. Schwab first, then Ms. Vogli, then Mr. Zarlingo, then Ms. Chatters. And it is, what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community? Okay, Mr. Schwab.
Yes, thank you. I know today we've talked a lot about the bigger issues that affect the entire city. I'd like just to bring up four issues specific to the Everett Third District. And this is from my door bailing and my meeting with the community. So these are some of my priorities for our district specifically, not ignoring the rest. Maintain the police department service and improve responses to property crimes, trespassing and traffic control. Improve pedestrian safety and accessibility for our community streets, especially Madison, Pex, Glenwood, Muckelteau Boulevard, Upper Ridge and Lower Ridge Road. I know there's a lot of pressure to do infilling of housing on the on the empty lots in our neighborhoods. But I do, we do need to address that these new residential developments fit into our neighborhoods. And that includes green spaces and accessibility for those to get around these large structures. And then the last one that's on my list or your list that you've given me is improve the maintenance of our our current parks. And so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. And we're now we're moving to Ms. Vogli, the same question. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
District Four in Everett has a vibrant, not vibrant, well, gosh, I should really have written this down. The art that our people down here can make is extraordinary. And oftentimes we see just the stupid tagging that the the gangs have put out there and it's just dumb and I just can't say that enough. But there's some beautiful graffiti artists, there's beautiful muralists and and fine artists and all of that. And I really, and we, not just me, but we really would love to see more of that in South Everett and District Four specifically. There's some great walls for that. So I just want to bring up the art aspect because, man, if we could get people to come down to see some really cool murals and then also have a community center, we do not have one. The the library, I think, is our closest thing. Love our library, love our new library. So bringing up the art. And I also, you know, you don't need to be afraid of the junkies. Maybe sometimes, but I was just speaking with a heroin addict the other night and I helped him get a piece of glass out of his finger. And these are the people that we also need to be bringing to the table. So that and accessibility.
Thank you very much. And now to Mr. Zarlingo. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Well, we've discussed a pretty broad spread of issues in a short time. And so I think the reason for this forum is really for voters to choose someone to look deeply and broadly at the issues and represent them well. So I wanted to speak about that for a moment. I'd like to suggest that people assess how a candidate will serve when they're elected by looking at how they've served their neighborhood and their community in the years before they ran. The things they've done on their own steam, not part of their job, their engagement with the city and non city organizations, nonprofits, businesses, schools, neighborhoods outside of their own. In other words, have they demonstrated a commitment to the range of the people and the interests they'll encounter and effect with the decisions they make as council members? It's that range of engagements, both in terms of breadth and length of time, that drove my decision to run when this position opened. I'm running because I see this as a time when a number of the council members are changing. I'm concerned about a loss of momentum and institutional knowledge. City is certainly facing significant challenges that we've talked about and they're going to require experience and a careful approach. That's what I'm going to try to do here, but hopefully learn more, especially of the kind of issues we've talked about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to you, Ms. Chatters, the final question. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Thank you. Well, thank you for inviting me to be part of this forum. It has not been nearly enough time to discuss the really incredibly challenging issues that our city is facing. But I appreciate being here. I'm a longtime member of the Everett community, having lived here for nearly a quarter of a century. This is where my husband and I chose to buy our home to raise our four kids. And I am deeply invested in the success of Everett because I intend to retire here, which leads me to the final issue that I want to raise today, which is around services for our growing senior population. Access remains a challenge for many of our seniors, especially those who are relying on public transportation, which often has gaps that are difficult to navigate. Everett Senior Center, which just reopened under a partnership agreement with Volunteers of America, is located downtown. And what I hear from seniors is that they would like to see a south end senior center that is more accessible. I also hear about our need for affordable senior housing located near businesses and services. For example, I hear a lot of interest in mixed use senior housing development along the Everett Mall corridor or near our future South Everett Link Light Rail Station. I'll wrap up by saying that it will be an honor to serve as your District Five representative. I will continue to listen, to notice who we have not heard from and to pass the mic so we can hear from them too. I'll work toward solutions that respect and benefit the whole community. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you candidates for participating in this forum. And I want to remind everybody who's listening that it's a tough job to give these great answers in a minute or a minute and a half. And they did a yeoman job. So thank you all very much for participating and for running for office. This is just the first step. For those of you listening, if you want to tell other people to listen to it, there's a recording of the forum and others will be available in a couple of days on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and YouTube channel. The links are, you could Google the website, but it's LWV, League of Women Voters, Snow Ho, not the whole, snohomish.org. We encourage you to explore additional information. We encourage you to explore additional information about these and all candidates. The Snohomish County Voter Pamphlet will be mailed to residences starting October 13. Vote411.org, which is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. And finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October 14. And Election Day is November 2. Please vote. And this concludes our candidate forum. And again, thank you all for joining us.